Hello, everyone, and welcome to our November Cook County Commission on Social Innovation. We are going to get started. So the time having been 4:06, we are going to officially kick off the meeting. So just as a reminder, part of the executive orders and virtual meetings guidelines and in compliance with the Governor's Executive Order 2020-7, 2020-10, and 2020-18, attendance at this meeting will be by remote means only. Instructions of how to attend this meeting and participate in written public comment will be provided on the Cook County Legistar webpage at cook-county.legistar.com prior to today's date. The proceedings will be able to be viewed at https://www.facebook.com/cookcountymission/ On today, November 12, 2020, at 4:00 p.m., written comments of any of these items listed in the agenda are accepted at seventhdistrict.office@gmail.com until 24 hours prior to the meeting. Written comments provided up to those 24 hours may be read aloud or summarized at the meeting. Three minutes per comment will be allowed and will be read as part of, as much as possible, in their entirety within those three minutes. Copies of the agenda and items will be considered at this meeting are also available on the Cook County website Please note that the Cook County building located at 118 North Clark Street in Chicago, Illinois, is closed to the public until the date is determined due to the circumstances with the pandemic. So with that said, we're going to officially begin the meeting, and I am going to ask Yesenia from my office to call the rule for attendance.
Commissioner Anawo-Hafo? Commissioner Anawo-Hafo? Absent. Commissioner Kerry Thomas?
Present. Hi.
Commissioner Thomas, present. Commissioner Kristen Freeman? Commissioner Kristen Freeman? I don't hear. Commissioner Harold Rice?
Present.
Commissioner Rice, present. Commissioner Harry Austin? Commissioner Harry Austin? Absent. Commissioner Howard Mouse?
Here.
Commissioner Mouse, present. Commissioner John Yonan?
Here. I am.
Commissioner Yonan, present. Commissioner Chrissy De Laurentis? Commissioner Chrissy De Laurentis? Absent. Commissioner Mark Lane? Commissioner Mark Lane? Absent. Commissioner Morgan Malone?
Here.
Commissioner Malone, present. Commissioner Wendy Raymer? Commissioner Wendy Raymer?
Here.
Present. Commissioner Sotchi Espinoza? Commissioner Sotchi Espinoza? Absent. Commissioner Sotchi Flores?
Present.
Commissioner Sotchi Flores, present. Commissioner Roger Cooley?
Present.
Commissioner Cooley, present. Commissioner Gary Aglopay?
Present.
Your present. Commissioner Sol Anderson? Commissioner Sol Anderson? Absent. Commissioner Patrick Brutus? Commissioner Patrick Brutus? Absent. Commissioner Karen Reeves? Commissioner Karen Reeves? Absent. Alderwoman Maria Hadden? Alderwoman Maria Hadden? Absent. Commissioner Almanaya?
Present.
Commissioner Almanaya, present. Commissioner, you do not have a quorum at the moment.
Thank you. Yesenia, I know that we're waiting for one more individual, so because we do not have quorum, we won't be able to do any official action, but we can proceed with public comment. Do, Yesenia, do we have any public testimony for this meeting?
No public comment or testimony submitted for this meeting.
Okay, with that said, we will proceed. Again, we will have to skip item number three for approval of the minutes from our last meeting. So we will entertain a motion when we have quorum. First off, I want to just give a few general updates. I know we have our Commissioner Yonan actually has a new role in the county, so we want to congratulate him. Is it official now? Hold on, you're muted a little bit.
You're going to have to take that vote at some point for your support, but not until you have that official board action.
Okay, so it's interim right now, Bureau Chief of Asset Management.
Oh, congratulations.
Very excited for our commissioner.
Congratulations, John. Terrific.
Thank you.
We'll know that he will excel in that position as well. Very excited for him. We know that Commissioner and Alderwoman Hadden is not with us today, but she was named 1 of 40 under 40 for Crane's Chicago Business, so we're excited to hear from that as well. We are, so I'll move on to some other general updates. So at the county, we're currently in the middle of the Cook County budget. So we were presented with the budget proposal as of October 15, and the President released those recommendations. It was for $6.9 billion budget for FY 2021, and I will highlight some of the items. There's $20 million investment in the Bureau of Economic Development, and this so that it could assist the businesses and residents who will be in need. $2 million for workforce training, $13 million will go to housing assistance, legal aid for closure mediation, emergency food, cash, and utility assistance. $20 million in justice reform from the, for, I'm sorry, the Justice Advisory Council. $5 million for violence prevention and restorative justice. $5 million for housing for those being released from jail on electronic monitoring. And $10 million to increase access to justice program and services. So we are in the middle of the process for amendments. We have started the amendment process as of Friday of last week, and tomorrow is the deadline for any amendments that will be submitted. So the final vote on the budget is set to be on November 24. So we would love to entertain and have a discussion on if any of the commission members are interested in writing a letter of support for any specific programs or any recommendations. Please feel free to reach out to my office either with Yesenia or with Victoria. And I think that is that on the budget side for now. Obviously, there's much more that I was not able to highlight, but I know that I can't go in depth with all of it during one of our meetings. So I will be more than happy to send you all some highlights and some other great projects and initiatives that will be part of the FY 2021 budget. More than happy to do so. The next update that I have on my end is that with the help of the Bureau of Economic Development and the President's Office, there has been a Cook County Small Business Ecosystem Assessment and Working Group. Again, the Bureau of Economic Development has initiated a partnership with Next Street to launch a working group to assess the impact of COVID-19 on small businesses in Cook County and develop recommendations for a sustainable and inclusive small business environment. So some key questions that are included in this assessment is what are the greatest capital and service needs facing, that I'm sorry, that are faced by the small businesses? What does COVID-19 funding landscape look like? How can Cook County play a greater role in supporting small businesses in the short and long term? And what does that look like? And I think we, I was very happy to receive a call from both the President and one of our commission members here, Commissioner and Bureau Chief from Economic Development, Sotchi Flores, and asked me to be a part of that working group. So with that, my goal is to continue to bring feedback and recommendations as part of this Commission on Social Innovation, but also some of the businesses, you know, in my district and outside, of course, in the suburban Cook County area. So with that, I would love if our Bureau Chief can maybe give us any words on the status on that or if there is anything maybe that I missed, Sotchi, that you would like to make part of this record.
Thank you, Commissioner, and I appreciate you participating in the group. Think over the last couple of months, as we have launched a series of initiatives to help small businesses, it's been a great learning process. Prior to that, the Bureau of Economic Development had historically focused on many manufacturers and looking at different sectors within suburban Cook County and looking at the larger scale businesses and attracting larger scale investors to suburban Cook County. But COVID just sort of switched things around and made us realize that we needed to start focusing more so on small businesses because the ecosystem, as you mentioned, the ecosystem of support to these small businesses has not been as robust as needed within suburban Cook County. We saw that early on in the pandemic when these small businesses were having a difficult time applying for the Paycheck Protection Program. They started contacting us, and fortunately, we partnered with many entities to make them make resources available or assistance available to these small businesses. But we realized that that's a key activity that we need to undertake, especially throughout the next couple of months, even years through this recovery process. In order to help small businesses, we need to develop a robust agenda. So we're learning from what we have in place right now. We have a good partnership with the Chicago Community Trust, and there's about 40 different business service organizations that are providing one-on-one technical assistance to these small businesses. And we're pairing that with $10,000 grants that are being provided to many small businesses within suburban Cook County. So we're learning from that process. Next Street is part of that network in helping us to assess what's working, what's not working, so that we can leverage those learnings with this equity investment that the county is making to really figure out where is, where's the gap? What resources can the county provide to suburban Cook County? And how are we going to do that? So that's what this whole small business working group is tasked with doing within the next couple of months, and I will be happy to share our learnings as that plan gets solidified. And I know that, Commissioner, you will bring a great insight into it. You have great experience working with many organizations and businesses on the ground, and that's sort of the type of feedback that we need at this point in order to develop a robust plan going forward. And actually, Jerry, Jerry, I think, over the years, has been fantastic with highlighting these issues and has worked very closely with the City of Chicago in developing their small business plan and probably can also provide input into how robust of a planning effort it entails to develop something like that. So we're not trying to replicate. We're trying to learn. Next Street, and I don't recall how long ago it was that they helped to sort of highlight some of this work for the City of Chicago, and we're trying to just learn from what happened within the city and continue to utilize that information to expand it in suburban Cook County. And the goal really is, because we see that there are many great organizations that typically focus within the City of Chicago's borders and try to increase their capacity of those organizations and have them provide those services within suburban Cook County. So oftentimes, organizations we've seen have a strong footprint within the city, and it's just making them aware and connected to the right partners within suburban Cook County so that we can take those resources to the small businesses that needed. Any questions? Anything else that, Jerry, you'd like to add?
Yeah, I think you received it a couple of weeks ago in the midst of this whole national elections, and it's being released. The Chicago Inclusive Growth Coalition completed a common set of outcomes and standard metrics to assess the impact of small business services operating in underserved areas, which, you know, I shared it with Cheriez at Next Street. It went out. I think everybody's been consumed, though, with the elections when that was dispersed. So we will be sharing it again at the upcoming quarterly Chicago Inclusive Growth Coalition meeting, but, you know, I'll circle back around with Cheriez at Next Street about how you don't have to recreate the wheel. That set of common standards to assess impact, actually, I've been sharing. I've had people out of state in Dallas and Arkansas and Ohio also interested in how they can adapt those common standards of metrics to really review what the outcomes are in their own regions and how that the services provided can show an impact for inclusive growth as well.
Jerry, this is Wendy. I think that is, I would love to see that, that set of metrics. I think that would be really great for this whole commission to see, and particularly for our committee. I would love to make sure we're all getting familiar with that.
Absolutely. I'll put it in the chat box.
Perfect.
And I think, I think Sotchi, Brad McConnell at X San Brad, and I discussed, we are going to have that on the agenda at the next quarterly meeting as well.
Oh, excellent. Yeah.
Yeah. You'll notice many of our partners on it, you know, SBA, SBDCs, many of the foundations like CCT that Sotchi, the Commissioner Flores discussed. JP Morgan Chase was behind this project to really come to some, whether or not a small business organization that provides services from a chamber to an SBDC, there's still some way that we wanted to provide them a framework to review what their impact is, whether or not they receive funding. And we realize there are a lot of metrics out there. There are a lot of measures. But this one, working with a lot, many of the BSOs in underserved neighborhoods were identified as the most salient ones to help with inclusive growth, but also support stabilization of businesses to have sustainable growth as well.
Sotchi, it's Howard. I have a quick question about, hey, how are you feeling? Are you good?
Good, good.
I hope. The September meeting, after the September meeting of EDAC, there were members that I selected to be part of that Next Street working group, and I thought that your work wraps up. Is it in January or December? Can you remind me?
It will go till January. So it's right now where we're anticipating continuing on till January.
That's great. I mean, such a great group of people, and I'm expecting really, really incredible results from your work.
And the key is to link things and not do it in silos. So we also included individuals from EDAC and members of the President's Council of Economic Advisers. So I'm excited that we can leverage a lot of great work that has gone on within the city and with Next Street. And I mean, I realize how much effort went into that process, Jerry, so it's a great starting point, and we're not trying to recreate. We're trying to learn from what has been established and continue providing those resources to suburban Cook County businesses.
Absolutely. So Jerry, what we'll do is we will make this part of the official meeting, so then we'll send it out with the minutes so that everybody has these tools and this information. Like Sotchi just mentioned, it's very important that we learn from some of the areas that have already developed, right? Toolkits or certain information that can be valuable and also useful for any, anything that we're building going forward for the small business community in Cook County. So I'm very excited about that project. I had my Next Street interview this morning where I gave some insights on what I've heard. They were very, very interested in the Social Innovation Commission. You know, they asked me at length of, you know, who's participating and what type of information you all are able to also bring to the table. So if you want to be connected in any way with them, just feel free to reach out to me. I'm very sure that, you know, they'll be more than happy to get some of, again, these tools and resources and information.
And, you know, this is Wendy again. I believe that I had asked Cheriez, and there was somebody on her team, this was a while back, that was on the Financial Capital Committee. So when you are meeting with them, if they would like to have representation on this commission via my committee, I mean, I would welcome somebody here from their team on my committee if they'd like to engage that way.
Absolutely. That might be helpful. I don't know. Sotchi, maybe I can connect with you on that? And whether that's a possibility, because that would be interesting if we could merge the information.
Absolutely. Let's touch base on it.
Great. So this is a really good transition into the next part of our agenda. So I think for the most part, this commission has dedicated a lot of time to finding out, you know, where we left off last year in the strategic, you know, the thinking of our strategic priorities for 2020, and then also being, of course, thrown that the pandemic curve ball and having to adjust our priorities and having to do a lot of the work and identifying, you know, what can be done, what at, by the resources that we all gather, but also what can be done at the different levels of government and what type of partnerships can be created. So over, you know, the past few months, we've had kind of this project going in the background where we've had conversations with members and the committees on what their priorities are and also what are their hopes going forward. So I think it was very helpful to continue that project and move it along, and again, help us with solidifying a strategic plan for the commission. But most importantly, how to, you know, be proactive in the areas that were highlighted multiple times, like housing, you know, public transportation, the, you know, support for small businesses and other opportunities for economic development. So what we decided to do, you know, it is that time of the year where we are putting together our report, and we've had, you know, my staff start gathering information and again, utilize all of the wealth of information and resources that have been brought together in this commission to try to formulate a document, hopefully a breathing, living document in which we are again highlighting some of the priority areas that we're hoping to accomplish. So as we think about, you know, that approach in our initiatives and again, plan for the future of the commission, we wanted to make sure that we took this time to collaboratively create the action steps and also the areas that maybe we need some additional support based on these priorities that we've discussed. So this information, again, will be going into our annual report, and then it will help us envision the long-term planning and aiming to finalize. So what I wanted to do is start off, I think Yesenia might still be on, yeah, Yesenia is on the call. Can you maybe share the document, Yesenia, so that people can see it? Get it up and running.
About to share the document, Ms. Man.
Thank you. And I did see that Harry had to step off. We had, we had quorum for a good 15 minutes, and I forgot to take the, I forgot to take the call for the minutes, but it does look like he will be returning shortly, so we'll do that then. Okay, perfect. So can we scroll down a little bit, please? There we go. So these are the ones that we have for the Public Capital Committee. So some of the areas that we mentioned and that we worked, that we specifically talked about in the past was while there was already some funding allocated to launch the three-year pilot for the South Cook Fair Transit Program. We wanted to, you know, brainstorm on how to address the areas here on the right. So I think, again, we want to congratulate, you know, John Yonan transitioning from superintendent and now into Bureau Chief, but especially on this program, this is one of, this is a really big accomplishment. So we want to make sure that we talk a little bit about these three priority areas that have not been addressed. So when we're talking about public transportation, again, we have this one project that is being addressed by the county, but then we have a few other areas that we have discussed that are not necessarily being addressed just yet. The first one being the Shared Fared Card, which is something that we've talked about a few times. This is, this is an objective that has not seen or has not been addressed. The second is an equitable transit-oriented development. So the City of Chicago released the first ever report on equity-oriented development in September of 2020. But again, there's still a lot of work that we must do in this area. And the last, the Lincoln Highway Industrial Corridor. Again, this has been an ongoing conversation, and we need to make sure that we leverage the state's support to advance the promotion of this corridor. So what I would like to open it up really quickly as we move forward is what specific entities do we need to work to build relationship on these areas, right? So who do we need to talk to? How can we advance this? I don't want a lot of these projects to get kind of stuck, so I think that as we move forward, we should identify, you know, who are the stakeholders, how to bring them to the table, how to get updates, and how to push for the advancements of these projects. So I'll open it up quickly to have a short discussion, and then we'll go into social and human capital and some of the priorities in that area.
Well, maybe I can kind of just give a little bit of the challenges that I know that are out there and just some ideas. So first off, the Shared Fair Card legislatively, the service boards were mandated to come up with a single fair card system that was going to work, and even with a law in place, it still has not come together. And so there unfortunately is the silos of those service boards that feel it's in their best interest. best interest to continue to kind of keep their own interests. And if it works for them, Ventra has done well on behalf of CTA. But there really needs to be advocacy of really wanting to push this need for there to be a universal system. And is it something that the RTA owns or is it going to remain in the silos of Metro, Pace and CTA? So I think the public campaign awareness and making the, the demand that, you know, the law says this needs to happen, where are we and why are we not moving that forward is something we've got to get the word out on. So first and foremost, I, I think that's where there needs to be an understanding of, you know, what it is. And it's not a technological challenge. It is truly one of those where it's not a priority for some more than others. On the equitable, you know, transit-oriented development, it's truly looking at all those modes, you know, Metro, CTA and a number of bus corridors that Pace and CTA has that, you know, really does need to look at a corridor beyond municipal boundaries. So I think working with the councils of government and the City of Chicago through perhaps the Chicago Metropolitan Area for Planning, that there needs to be that commitment for partners to come alongside some, you know, already done work, but it's still kind of piecemeal. And lastly, on Lincoln Highway, I think we did, you know, put all that on the table. One of the proposals is to come up with another opportunity in the Village of Linwood on the eastern end of the Lincoln Highway Corridor. So those are a couple of ideas just to throw out there if there's anyone else who wants to give feedback.
Perfect. Thank you for, for that background. So I think, so as we move forward to, you know, trying to figure out, you know, these attainable or figuring out how our goals could be attainable timely and figure out, you know, what that looks like. I think one of the biggest challenges that we have, you know, to your, to your point, Commissioner Yonin, is how do we get the stakeholders to be on the same page? Like, how do we get them to buy in into something like this if they are not 100% interested? Or whether they do not believe that it benefits them? So I think that's, that's important to, you know, to highlight. And I think that that's a continuous barrier that we're seeing in advancing any of these. So what I heard from you is some of the stakeholders would be the, the separate NTS entities. So like Metro, Pace, CTA, potentially that bigger branch of RTA to bringing them to the table and having the discussion on what, because, you know, to your point legislatively, it's no longer a barrier. So figuring out how do we have, how do we get their buy-in? This doesn't necessarily seem like it is a, you know, short-term type of solution. It seems like there needs to be a longer conversations and, and discussion. So if we're thinking about it in a way where, again, we're trying to figure out how attainable it is, then our, how should I phrase this? Our, our goal would not be solved basically in FY 2021. So I think that with that information, I think we can go back internally in my office and figure out, you know, who, how can we get the stakeholders involved? How do we start the conversations? And then, you know, when will it be a realistic goal for, for this to, to be accomplished? So thank you for that input. Is there anybody else that would like to have an input specifically around public trans in the COVID area, sorry, era? And how to solve some of the inequities that, that, that are in these three sections?
Hi, this is Harold. I don't know if I have a, I gotta take the chance. I don't know if I have a solution to this as much as I'd like to take a stab at the shared card, fare card. I don't, could you tell me what efforts have been made, what traction has taken place with the RTA or CTA? I'd like to leverage some of the relationships I have with both of those agencies.
Chairwoman, I could jump in and just say, you know, it's, it's the Ventra Next Generation that they said that they're working on. The Ventra Card, every one of the service boards are supposed to have some parts of a contractual agreement with them, but it's the CTA that leads it. Because they were the ones when it rolled out that kind of got a little bit beat up because it wasn't as applicable to Metro, which you buy a fare instead of a dollar amount. And CTA is the, the main lead on that, the Ventra Card system. Are they going to embrace that? Are they going to go to something else? They really are kind of keeping that close to themselves as to how they want to communicate that with the other service boards. And again, I just think the advocacy of, I don't care how it happens, are we working on it and when could this be delivered? Like, that's what we got to demand of them, that there's no reason why this can't happen in a year or two. And that's what we want to push, not whether there's light on who's doing it and what they're doing, but when will this be done?
Commissioner Yonin, is there a way where, given Commissioner Anaya's pointing out of, we are in this COVID pandemic phase of, you know, recovery? Can we get workforce into these discussions in terms of the, you know, the frontline workers who are dependent upon this transportation? And how important it is to, in regards to the shared fare card, be involved in pushing that discussion and advocating for why it's more urgent to have this completed sooner rather than later? I realize, and, and thank you, I appreciate you pointing out that it's not high on their priority, but it's of, it's something that would ease the access to transportation for many of the frontline workers who rely on these different, different modes, many of them, not just one, of public transportation to get to their workplace.
Agree. And I definitely welcome, again, that advocacy with the workforce is a group that with our fair transit pilot, we feel we're building some of that momentum and we have a partner in Metro. We just got to continue to say that we just, we have to be working on this as a region. It's a shame, it's as great of a transit system that we have, that they all work independently.
Perhaps I could have, when I, I'm going to be holding some convenings on policy issues for small business majority, on systemic issues that impact small businesses and for some of them who are, you know, are still operating to some degree, it's something that we could weave in to see if we could help with that advocacy part about equitable transportation for their workers.
Great. Commissioner, welcome that. Let us know if we can help.
You know, this is Wendy chiming in here, you know, as far as the concept of it's not high on priority list, you know, trying to get their attention or whatever. Is, is drafting a, a statement from this commission calling for it? I don't know what the, I'm not in government, right? So I don't know if there's an official ordinance or statement or what that would even look like, but just to kind of put something in writing, something that's official, saying that, hey, we have eyes on this. This is a priority for this commission and we collectively are pushing for some answers or for some action. Will, will that kind of help with kind of, you know, the noise that's going to be needed and the pressure that's going to be needed to, to start working on something?
You can definitely do that. I think that that would be a really good initiative on our behalf to stress why this should be a priority.
Right. I mean, this is so in line with the, the mission of this commission. And, you know, I don't know what form it would be, John or Commissioner Anaya, as far as what would make it official or what would carry the most weight with a statement and who would look at it and care. But I, I think being that voice for things like this where there is a stalemate or some stalling that is being done, we can, you know, that's where I think we can use our voice for whatever value it's going to bring.
Definitely, I agree. And, and Madam Chair, you know, next Wednesday, the service boards are going to be before the Transportation Committee. And perhaps the statement from you and your team to that effect could at least be recorded as part of that and then we could do something official with some kind of, you know, you know, not necessarily ordinance, but just some kind of, of written, you know, kind of declaration or something that together.
Yeah, with all of our names, you know, like here as a, as a collective voice, we're concerned about this.
That makes perfect sense and I will definitely, you know, we'll, we'll try to see if we could draft something in our office. And then we could either do it as a form of resolution or a letter where it does have everybody signing off. I did see a few folks on the, on the chat function that have also brought out other advocacy groups and other individuals maybe working on transit that may be also good to engage and, and even maybe get their, you know, their sign-on to the letter to add more voices as well. And that, I think that that's a perfect, short-term, you know, goal that we can do and we can accomplish fairly quickly that would make a, a good statement and that would make, that will call attention to how it should be prioritized. And then as we work long-term, we can maybe figure out how we, how the commission can plug into the conversations to advance the, the, this specific thing as a priority in, in their perspect, excuse me, in their particular areas, either in government or in any other form. Great. Any other final comments on, on this area in regards to transit? Okay, if not, we'll move to the next section. Yesenia, please? So the next area that we've identified, that, that based on our conversations, that has been a priority of the commission, have been in conjunction with both the, I'm sorry, with the social and human capital. So this committee, just to remind you all, works to build sustainable Centers of Economic Development, Employment and Engagement that provide social economic advancement to all, I'm sorry, to the most disinfected, disinvested residents and communities in Cook County. So these are the priority areas that currently are being addressed at the county level. So leveraging county procurement, so the office's goals for 2021 include adding more staff to make their work more efficient. They are leveraging the Bureau of Technology to improve procurement cycle times and better management of the applications. Community wealth building and racial wealth gap. So the CARES Act and in conjunction with the partnership at CMAP, have allowed the county to meet immediate needs in the context of COVID-19. Shared ownership, so the county passed item number 18-6145 in 2018, but there still needs to be more information and opportunities for partnerships. And then develop a sustained social safety net. So CARES Act has also allowed the Bureau of Economic Development to launch, sorry, launch the Community Recovery Initiative. But we are currently working on the infrastructure for long-term, which is part of the discussion we just had about small businesses. So with that said, the priorities currently that are not being addressed by Cook County or, or any of our, or potentially need, I'm sorry, any external support is the economic recession preparation. So there is no infrastructure. We've been discussing this for over a year. I know that we had tried to figure out a way to discuss how to prep for any recessions. The commission didn't quite get there before COVID, you know, hit us. And I think that it's important that we figure out and strategically identify areas that that we can be helpful in. So does anybody want to share any, either feedback on the, the areas that have already been addressed by Cook County or any other areas in regards to the recession?
The only thing I would say is it's kind of related to the economic recession prep. So this is different, but I think there's a lot of opportunity to be thinking about coming out through and out of the pandemic in a different way. And I think there's different spaces where people are talking about that together. So whether it was the city's recovery roadmap or CMAP just convened a conversation. And I know like the workforce, public and private workforce funders are having some conversations. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there that is related to responding to a recession rather than preparing for. So I would just add that.
I think a lot of the opportunity there that, at least I'm seeing from a small business perspective, is financial resiliency and preparedness. I'm not sure, you know, where we can explore that a little bit more. And it's not necessarily cash refunds or, or universal income, but more of how we can build a stronger safety net for those, for building financial recovery and resiliency for many of these individuals that will also help many of the self-employed, of which over 95% of them are black, self, are solo-employed, to help recover and restart their businesses again as they, as they pause them.
Perfect. Thank you for that input. Commissioner Norrington Reeves put in the chat that other issue is the digital equity and broadband access. That's a great point. And I think we, we've discussed that as well as one of the areas that needs some additional help and support.
Yes, it's Howard. I'm happy to report on that as soon as we're able to get several of our government leaders together. We're not either quarantining or dealing with the imminent shutdown of further restrictions. So there's going to be a public announcement, Commissioner. And when that announcement happens, there is a donor who wants to come public at that time. And so I've been holding back and I beg that I can have the opportunity to come back to our commission and report, which I hope will be possibly in December, but almost certainly in January because digital equity is a primary concern of Madam President.
Thank you, Howard. Okay, so the, the areas that I've highlighted, so leveraging the county procurement, a question that I had on here is if the commission feels that in any way we want to have any input on that. So I think that there have been changes specifically with improving, you know, the, the procurement process for vendors. But I'm not sure if anybody has any experience or anything that I could bring back to the Office of Procurement to give them any advice or anything particular that would go well in this report? Again, any recommendations that can facilitate access for small businesses or for just other vendors here locally?
This is Commissioner Cooley. I think some of the things the procurement office could do is be, is, well, one is you added more stat, looking at adding more staff to be more efficient, but also allowing them to be more, have more time on the front end when they're designing and issuing RFPs in partnership with departments and agencies to really look at how they're shaped in terms of how they're scoped and sized to be more accessible for businesses with an equity focus. Well, in some cases, we've seen it, especially from the food purchase procurement where we're working with them. The contracts get designed very quickly. There's not a lot of advanced notice for kind of being able to be creative with how to design those contracts and then implement them. And then even in how they manage the review process for something more of an RFP process where there can be multiple criteria looked at and not only the lowest bid processes.
Great. Thank you for your feedback, Commissioner Cooley. Okay, in regards to the shared, shared ownership, which is, you know, the co-ops, you know, how do we use? Um, you know, how do we use, does anybody have any input on how do we use uh this moment to implement? Some of the objectives that we that had been set forth in the beginning when we did the resolution. Um, and then what other partnerships? I know that one of the uh, I believe, uh, one of the committees will be discussing this a little bit more in length. On on anything else that we need to do, any infrastructure that needs to be built for co-ops going forward. Um, any input on that as of yet, um, or things are still being discussed?
I think some of the other feedback is, you know, some other localities, New York and Madison, Wisconsin in particular, helped set up a. Either rotating loan fund or grant pool to help launch worker cooperatives.
Thank you.
Commissioner, this is Sochi. Um, we have had a a good conversation with internal folks. With regards to this topic as well. And I know that Next Street has been interviewing a few individuals. Cause it's some, it's it's an interesting concept to try to figure out how we can expand upon it. And as as part of our small business strategy, incorporate some learnings. So we've asked Next Street to also interview individuals and explore that area a bit. To develop further our small business agenda for next year.
Great. I know I I included it in my interview as well, so I'm glad that they're hearing it multiple times from various sources.
Yes. And we've also retooled at Small Business Majority our national and our state agenda to. We've always addressed racial equity, but we've now retooled it in terms of. Uh, racial equity for a small business recovery during COVID and what some of those systemic policies are as well. And how that could play out in Cook County and the state too. So that can contribute to this.
Thank you, Commissioner Aglopay. Okay, um, I'm looking at the time and I'm gonna move on to the next uh section. But if there are any, if there's anything else that we're missing, please feel free to reach out to our office. We're gonna try to document this as much as possible. And my goal and our goal in our office is to strategize on this information, looking at the gaps. And again, setting attainable timelines and figuring out how we get others involved and can really uh move along the conversations. And connect them either to the committees or the commission as a whole to again, continue the work. Um, so the next one that we have here is the Committee on Financial Capital. So I think some of the areas uh here, uh, so very similarly to the other section. The county has addressed several of the priorities at the moment in in relates, when it relates to COVID-19. But I think that there is still a need to further dive in some of the areas. I know we've we've talked about some of these, like the digital equity efforts, et cetera. Um, so one of the examples that I can highlight is that the committee. Has mentioned the importance of accessing the impact of programs and identifying um any of those gaps. So the committee shared interest in learning further about the digital equity efforts at the county. I know just Howard just highlighted how, um, you know, he's gonna be more than happy to come back to the commission and address any questions and and do a presentation for us. Um, so is there, um, you know, anything else that that anybody would like to address in regards to that digital gap? Um, and specifically when we're talking about, you know, um, the the code program or anything else that maybe has not been addressed so far?
Are you talking specifically for the digital or?
Yes, I I think digital and then we'll move to the to the other parts.
No, I can't wait to hear more about the digital uh program and the digital efforts. I, you know, as a funder, I hear so much information and, you know, need on the education front, right? Students uh trying to access their learning, both K through twelve and city colleges and such. And um this here, of course, is on the business side of things, which hello, is very critical too. Um, so I'm very glad to take this on and really make sure we're pushing forward on it.
Commissioner, can I add, it's Howard, that the solution that, um, there is no um single solution to to digital equity. But when we look at digital devices, digital connectivity, digital proficiency, the overall definition of what digital well-being is. Every single region of the country comes up short somewhere. For us, it's certainly in the Southland. And one of the things I could tell you about what we've been working on through code and with the county and the president's office. Is a first initiative that will look at what I like to say is owned and in the home. Solutions that are not just for the uh school-aged children, but also for adults. And simultaneously, as we look at the devices and the connectivity and the proficiency. We are looking at a combination of addressing those issues along with upskilling. So that if we look at the devices that come back into circulation, that would be distributed to people, adults and children for families. It will be uh again, uh affordable, low to no cost solutions that are produced by local talent. Uh, thanks to one of our fellow commissioners, Karen Norington Reeves, who's helping to partner in on the workforce. That will be local and will be working on these devices prior to distribution. So this, I cannot wait to talk about this and present it and give materials into everybody's hands. But I want to give the president and the other elected officials time to get together at a common date on a calendar. So you will hear about it very quickly afterwards and know more about it at that time. I apologize.
No, that's great. Thanks so much, Commissioner Mills. Appreciate it. Um, great, so uh there there are a few other items in this uh committee and and priorities that have been brought forward. That have partly been addressed by Cook County. So um code being one of them, I I just mentioned, but I did um uh skip over number one on here. Which is the uh the tech assistance for the businesses, um, I'm sorry, the technical assistance. And I think that this is also part of the 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 community initiative program. That um has been um uh brought forward by the Bureau of Economic Development. So uh that that has worked well. Um, and then I know we talked a little bit about worker co-ops, but this was also a priority here in um. Uh, that was discussed part of this committee. And then, of course, the leveraging the opportunity zones, um, which is important. I know that particularly just last month, actually, um, the Cook County Treasurer Maria Pappas released the report. Um, that again was uh addressing um the the twenty-five-year time period of certain areas with property taxes that had.
Oh, you cut out.
Hello?
Okay, there you were.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't know what happened. Um, and how that impacts, you know, the communities that are not able to, um, uh, you know, pay for their property taxes, et cetera. So I think that uh these were some of the the areas that we can discuss. But I'm not sure again if there's any other gaps that we haven't previously discussed or any other areas that, or any other, again, stakeholders or other people that we need to bring to the table. To figure out how we move these conversations along. So I'll open it up um for any discussion on any of the other three items on here for this uh committee.
Uh, well, I'll weigh in as the committee chair. Things are, they're great. The the one thing that I'm seeing that I know we discussed, um, Kristen and myself and and other people. Was the concept that it's the the complicated process for small businesses to apply. To um engage with like the relief programs or these programs. And I don't know if, you know, that can be embedded in the the first bullet with technical assistance or not. But in my mind, that was actually a thing of like looking inward to the Cook County's own application forms or communication. Or whatever is being perceived as uh complex to the organizations on the street.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, um, you know, regarding like the external partners with the Next Street, I'm just really excited about, um, you know, this initiative with them. And I I am assuming that they're gonna be a great, you know, external partner in kind of feeding information. And um, you know, receiving, you know, any insight from the committee as well. So I'm looking forward to working more closely with them. I think Charisse is smart and the whole team is really smart, so.
Great. Thanks, Commissioner Ramar, for your feedback. Anybody else have anything else to add? Okay, um. So we'll move then um to the next section. I know our Chair of Intellectual Capital had to jump off the call. Um, but we'll go over some of those um priority areas and where we're at with that. Can we move to the next? Okay. So um digital equity was also discussed at length in this committee, an intellectual committee. Um, so we know again that this topic connects with many other aspects of the other committees. Um, and especially now during a pandemic, I think it further highlights the importance and need for it. Um, so the committee uh has brought up this as a priority specifically of looking at. How digital connectivity uh should be pushed, right, from the from a government aspect. Um, and I know that the county has expanded this response again. I'll, you know, just briefly connecting it to, uh, you know, Commissioner Howard Mills on on the work that they're doing. So it looks like uh that there has been some work on that aspect. But in regards to just accessibility overall of government, I think that that's also something that's very important. Uh, and I highlight that because during pen, during the pandemic and at the beginning. Getting information and accurate information was quite a hiccup, if if I may say. I think, um, for example, in my district, a lot of people were confused on who can actually, uh, you know, get the virus. You know, who was uh prone, you know, what steps needed to be taken to prevent. Um, that 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 was on the direct, you know, COVID uh connection. But also like overall, uh, people were asking about resources. They didn't know where to go. It was, uh, maybe things were not in in multiple languages. It was only in English. So there was a lot of gaps um that existed. And I think that, you know, we've been working with with the county and one of our working groups for for um accessibility. Um, and and trying to figure out how the the county as a whole becomes more accessible. So moving along with 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 the times that have been kind of, you know, forced upon us due to the pandemic. Um, we want to make sure that that the county becomes accessible, that the information uh is available for various communities. Easy, that that it's uh in one place. Um, and that it's not only, um, you know, paper-based or or only just, you know, online-based. So having a variety of different ways to access this information as as a priority. So I know that the county has, you know, worked to stream meetings, for example, allowing individuals to participate remotely. Um, having town halls on online platforms, having, you know, quote unquote, talks and Facebook lives. Uh, either again on Facebook or on Zoom. So I think that that's something, um, you know, that has been worked on. Um, and the precipit- uh, I'm sorry, and the other uh governance toolboxes. This year, the county has expanded the ways that constituents can again, access those resources. So for example, uh, you know, Cook County Assessor went on an online basis to do property tax appeals and property tax exemptions. Which um it was not happening before. Um, and it was just in time that this that this happened again, they were able to get as many applications as possible. Um, and then um able to to get a a lot of this work moving along. Um, and, you know, people were getting their exemptions, they were getting their appeals. Um, it wasn't impacting them in that way. And I think that uh that that speaks volumes again to getting government and other entities to move into a more um. Uh, open and accessible of government. So I guess in the long term, um, my question for you all was like, how can we continue to make government more accessible? And how can we continue to build pub- public trust overall um for government? Um, and I think that that uh can help us also phrase as we move forward. Again, building infrastructure in the county and leveraging the pandemic and what has happened. To being able to create really meaningful change um on how government interacts with constituents. I don't know if anybody has any feedback on that. Okay, great. Um, so part of uh, part of this, um, you know, as we continue conversations. Um, with the different working groups that my office is a part of. I'll be sure to uh input or bring any uh any information and present it to you all. Um, I think that it's important, um, again, that we that we continue the work on on these various um levels and the different. Things that we have prioritized as a commission and try to figure out how we plug in to the work that is already happening. But how to, how do we continue to push even past that, right? I think that again, COVID brought a good opportunity for us to have government operate and address some of these gaps. But um again, moving forward, it's important that we continue to to create a good infrastructure. So if there's, uh, you know, any other um uh input at any point, we're gonna share this. This document and if there's, again, we'll we'll put some of the feedback that we've received. Uh, and then we're gonna be working throughout uh to finalize a report. So please uh keep an eye out for that. That will be emailed to you all. Um, and we will um work forward um to uh to continue to finalize that. And during um uh the next few months, work in finalizing a strategic plan with all of our goals. And figuring out how do we get stakeholders involved and how do we again, push push forward some of these ideas, which I'm very excited about. Um, so with that said, I think um I do want to go into um the next part of our agenda. So are, is there any other feedback or any other comments? Okay, I don't see anybody. Okay. Um, so just as an FYI, we will not be having a December meeting. Um, so we're asking, um, you know, committees who have not met yet to send us their proposed dates on the on uh to my office of when they're gonna be meeting next. Um, I think this is, um, because we're not gonna be meeting next uh next month. I think it's important if there are any committee meetings that haven't met to start discussing some of the areas. I know it's been difficult with COVID. Um, my office, I know I made this uh announcement to to most of you all. That we're looking into a possibility of having uh meetings every other month or at a different type of um schedule than than the one that we currently have. Just due to COVID, it's it's made it very difficult for us to meet um and to move along some of our our work and then also have the committees meet. and to move along some of our work and then also have the committees meet. So I think that sometimes it's better, again, to be more targeted and work, you know, every other month and be able to accomplish those goals than to meet every month and not be able to accomplish much. So I want to make sure that I made that announcement. We're looking into that possibility. We'll keep you all updated when we have our final conversations with some folks about potentially making an amendment to the ordinance. Are there any?
Yeah, can I just weigh in on that one? I appreciate you taking a look at that. Because there's always this tension between this, you know, what this commission and our committees are up to and then the actual work that so much, many of us are doing, right? Like, we're all, you know, pedal to the metal with our own. And it's exciting stuff. It's necessary stuff. And if we can streamline it and focus that way and just, you know, provide more room for the impact work to really be done by the, you know, the soldiers on this committee, I'm behind that. It has been a challenge with COVID and all like the competing priorities and the uptick in expectations and responsibilities and new initiatives. And it's not going anywhere soon, this, you know, pandemic and the heightened needs and activities that are being put on all of our shoulders, even including you, you know, Alma and Cook County. So I appreciate that you're having that, this kind of conversation. Yeah.
Yeah, most definitely. And I think, you know, to your point, Commissioner Raymer, I think it's important that we also, you know, just identify that, you know, what our capacity looks like. And I think in a time of COVID, when we have so many more responsibility, for many of you all, if not all of you all, your work has only, you know, been multiplied, right? So I think we need to recognize that and I want to be respectful of that. And so that's a serious conversation we're having internally in my office. I know that it would help us out as well to be able to, you know, be very fully prepared for the next meeting and bring a really good work product forward for you all. And I think, you know, the next steps on our end is to really look at the ordinance and if there is anything else that could improve how we function and, you know, what our role is in the county. We want to make sure that we submit that all together. So we're doing that. We're going to be working really diligently and keeping you all in the loop if there is a change that comes along with our conversations. So I do want to open it up for any final announcements or anything that maybe we might have missed. I know we had quorum multiple times, but we were really into our conversation. So I didn't get a chance to, you know, ask for the vote on the minutes, but we can always table that to the next meeting. But I don't know if there's anything else that needs to be discussed or be brought to the conversation at this point.
I do think, Commissioner, that we have to be very vigilant against our desire to be together with people that we love and care about and what's happening right now so that we do have a meeting in January with everyone back on the line. And no matter what the need is from this commission, I know everybody's dedicated to it. But the tug and pull of these holidays that are about to come up are going to be, it's going to be significant on all of us. And the warnings are out there and we all have to tolerate whatever risk level we can. But I do care about every member on this commission. And Commissioner, I hope that, you know, the changes you're about to make keep us as a guiding light toward whatever ultimately happens when we get back together in January.
Absolutely. And I think everybody's safety is always our priority, both physically but also mentally. So we want to make sure that everybody's in a good state, you know, when we are able to reconvene. So thank you for that, Commissioner Mills. So I didn't see any announcements. So with that said, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. I don't, can somebody make that motion for me, please?
So moved, Commissioner Rice.
Thank you, Commissioner Rice. Can I get a second? Seconded by Commissioner Yonin. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So we are officially adjourned as of 5:21 PM. Thank you, everyone, so much for your input. We'll be in touch. Stay safe. Stay healthy.
Yes.
Thank you as well.
Likewise. Bye-bye.